See a crowd again. All in order. Any conditions of directions to the agenda?
So moved it, that's the way it is.
I'll second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Prove the minutes as he said before.
Oh, okay, well.
Sorry about that.
Here to be correct, motion to approve minutes.
Second.
All in favor? General public concerns. Everybody here to run his feet? No. All right, Ben, you're up.
Morning. Items on the agenda. The first item on the agenda is to approve pay voucher number two. For project LC three nine three five zero six, this is the. Bridge that we called Taliers Bridge on Kentucky Avenue that was replaced. Late October, early November, uh, this is the. Final payment for that project.
Thank you guys.
Yeah, the project went really well, uh, we need to come back in and see it, but obviously. When they finished up lately.
Well, that's ninety-nine fifty-four sixty-eight.
Yes.
That's is that paying their remaining?
That's paying their. So this project will be complete.
So we got all of the, is there any rip wrap or anything around that, or?
Yep. Yeah, we've we've got that, uh, on the four corners there, um, will be line item number six. So, uh, everything will be paid, they use just slightly less than a hundred percent on the rip wrap. It's just whatever gets thrown on the two trucks.
Yeah, didn't quite.
Didn't quite scale out.
Everything you're happy with it?
Yes. No, that one's a good one.
Motion to approve this pay voucher. No, any other discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The second item that I've got on the agenda, uh, it's actually. Miswritten on, uh. On your sheet today, we've already approved the purchase of the truck. This is the, uh, approval for the snow equipment that goes on the truck. Um, I had my ops manager put together the. The list of. Stuff to go on the agenda for today, because I was gone for meetings last week, uh. But the the quote for the truck was already. Was already accepted. With Reese, uh, I believe we did that September. This is the quote for the snow equipment to go on, we took quotes from Highway Truck and Ford Dodge as well as. Uh, Henderson over by Waterloo. Uh, those are the bold numbers that you're looking at a hundred and twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars for Highway Truck. And a hundred and fifty-two thousand one hundred and thirty dollars for Henderson. Yeah, it would, uh. Be my recommendation that we go with Highway Truck again.
Highway Truck with what, how much?
Hundred and twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-three.
Okay.
So can they get you? Some type of confirmation on when they can get that equipment, or we just out and.
Uh. The biggest thing is hydraulics right now, hydraulic are, they said nine months out, so.
This truck isn't even gonna be on.
Which this truck doesn't get even get ordered until July.
Next winter.
So this is next winters, I mean, i- it's crazy how. Equipment has changed, even over the course of the last four years. I mean, it used to be you could buy a truck and be fully loaded with all of your equipment, you'd have it in three and a half months. Now you're pre-planning. Fifteen to eighteen months out.
Well, this will basically be set up just like the one that we have sitting down there now.
Yes.
Same box, same.
Same box, same everything, uh, there will be a, it'll be. This one will be a foot longer and the wing configuration will be slightly different, but yes.
What is this, the? Hundred, we're looking at a twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars.
Yes.
When does that actually get paid to them?
It would get paid to them. Year from now. When they deliver the truck. So.
Took you order today? Or whenever that price is.
That price, well, it's it's as locked as. Right now, I mean, there's.
That nightmare is trying to budget stuff three years out, isn't it?
Yeah, it's. It's a bit chaotic.
She got that in consideration.
Yeah, so you'll see it in my budget.
That's next.
Coming up, because it'll be next fiscal year that it's actually placed.
Well. Essence of the confusion of bordering stuff so far ahead, and it sounds like this is the correct way to go, I take the motion to approve the. Snow equipment quote from Highway Truck for her twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars.
It did only go up by eighteen hundred. From the one that's getting the equipment put on it now.
Well, I guess that's good news in today's climate.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll I'll second Eric's motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So. The one we have ordered and sitting down there with. Got a delivery scheduled for that, you know?
Uh, I talked to him.
I mean, I just said it's. We don't have any snow, it's a bush. Leave it down there.
Uh. Ten of deliveries. The end of the month. So they're progressing, I I need to stop down there and take a look at it, but. Yeah, they're progressing nicely with it. Um. Last item that I've got on the agenda is to approve the five-year plan amendment for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. This is. Basically for logistics, there's two things that have changed on this one compared to the original one that we approved. Uh, first, I took Murray Bridge from theoretically. Five years out. Using. Uh, in a, an I L L. Program and move that to four years out so that the feds can see it on our stip. For this raised grant that we're applying for. Um. So that moved from. Twenty twenty-eight to twenty twenty-seven. On your five-year program. Uh, the other item that is in here now that wasn't before is the covert replacement. In Thor, just as you're heading east out of town by the lagoons. So originally, that was programmed with, uh. Money from the DOT. And they were approved through Midas for a hundred and seventy thousand for replacement of that project. When they came out and they listed the project number, it was a. Long project number, but it had swap listed in it. And the way the DOT handles swap is you pay for it, they reimburse.
Thor don't have.
Thor doesn't have a hundred and seventy thousand sitting in an account where they can cover that upfront. So talking to the DOT, they said that the other way that they can run that is. They can pull that a hundred and seventy thousand out of our farm-to-market account and then reimburse it, so. It won't be money out of our local account, we won't see it on that end. But essentially, we'll become the bank.
Already had discussion on this.
We did.
And then basically, like you said, it'd be a pass through.
It's a pass through.
It doesn't cost the county anything to do it, it just allows Thor to get this. Is it a, end up being a box office?
Yes.
Yeah, it's. They're a project, yeah, they're they're project completed.
Correct, no.
So did you have to move that up then?
So that wasn't even on the five-year program, uh, because it was all supposed to be taken care of.
Through the city, you know?
Yeah, through the city and the DOT, um, so this was added to fiscal year twenty-four.
Yeah. And that's, is that imagine to get actually done in fiscal year twenty-four?
Uh, it'll probably be completed in twenty-five, but I'd like to get it let in twenty-four and get the money obligated.
Okay, good. Yep.
So those are the only two?
Those are the only two changes.
Next up.
Yeah.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve your five-year. Plan amendment for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eric.
Beyond that, we've got, I've got, uh. I think three raise grant meetings this week, so. Yeah, that'll be, you'll see more of that coming as. The next month and a half progresses on. We'll have a resolution and and different forms that we'll have to fill out, but.
Paper fingers for us to get that.
Yeah.
That'd be amazing.
Yeah, that would, uh, that would get us another. Roughly two and a half million for this project, so.
That'd be awesome.
Wow.
Anything earth-shattering in the morning?
Uh. Not terribly. Some talk on on the raise grants, uh. Uh, some NEPA and and, uh. Shipload clearance guidelines. That have changed slightly, um, that they're still working through. Nothing that I'd say earth-shattering. Uh, Wednesday, I was at, uh. Concrete recertification class, so I didn't make it to Wednesday's meetings. But I'm recertified.
Yeah, great.
Beyond that, the guys are. Cutting trees, uh, we pulled in shoulders and added some shoulder material on Gatch Park. Last. Believe it was Friday. Got that completed, um, we're still doing some covert resets. Uh, weather's been fit enough, we're still doing driveways. Trying to get those, yeah. Excellent, plugging away and and apparently, uh, upsetting a few landowners west of town. Um, I heard about that briefly Friday afternoon. Um. We were trying to do some, uh. Say some intersection cleanup. And some brush guy. Temporarily stockpiled on a farmer's field and. They didn't ask permission, so, uh.
I think the only thing that they were upset about is the ground isn't frozen, our trucks on there and. All he said was is. We're trying to raise a crop and, you know, the same thing we get when we put snow fence on.
Yeah, I understand.
They have. They said, I apologize, we should have. Fall, so.
Yeah, it's it's typically our policy to, uh, get ahold of the landowner prior to any of that, so I will, uh, talk with my foreman and find out where we, uh. Where we missed on that.
Where are you? This is good.
Anything else for me?
Yes. This is something you sent out on, uh, December sixth to everyone. A lot of people, not just the supervisors. And speaking of the, uh, raise grant that you just touched base on, speaks to, uh, letters of support and from the community.
Yes.
Towards that grant.
Yes.
Have you got any response back on that?
Uh, quite a few.
Really?
Yeah, most of, uh. Uh. The. Emergency management crews have gotten back to me, the cities, um. Kyle down at EMA, Dean. Um. Alyssa, most of them have responded positively, I need to talk Jim directly, I emailed it to Chris Clark and his chief deputy, but. I need to talk to to Jim, make sure he's on board, um, for most of the cities.
So you're getting.
I haven't heard, uh. Anything from the elevators yet.
So that would be another good, good one.
But I did, I emailed them anyway. Yeah, I'll have to get ahold of them.
How soon do they want, are you, so you are you getting?
So this. I haven't gotten anything back yet, I told them that I'd be in touch and send a couple of draft ones.
Yeah.
Uh, tomorrow's kickoff meeting should include. A a couple of. Draft samples that we can utilize.
Obviously, I just read this and we knew about it of course, and they were working with the other counties to with the grant. You want to do everything you possibly can, because you say two and a half million?
Yes, yeah, uh, and I did hear back from, uh, Representative Booth. On it as well, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that people were paying attention, that's because it is very important to get these letters of community support.
Yes.
Excellent.
That is the plan, and then I would also, uh, like to get one from the board supervisors as well.
Okay.
Supporting the projects. Yes.
I I support getting the grant money.
Right, yeah.
You got it a hundred percent, Ben.
Hey, you give us one of those draft things that maybe you'll get at one of your meetings.
Okay.
We'll we'll finish filling it out and get it back to you.
Perfect, that sounds good. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There it is, I got it, of course, yeah, so we've moved down to discussion action on veteran repairs off of space lease. So, uh.
Lois Curry dressed off. A new. Contract for. The lease for the veterans affair and it's gone up, it's now two eighty per month. And. Um. Sandy, uh.
I asked her to put this on the, because I didn't think we should sign it unless we get the, um, board's approval for the, you know, the chair or vice chair to sign it, but. I thought we talked last year that once we got the elevator fix, which we did, that we were gonna move the veterans affair. Because there's, um. Uh, handicap accessible, plus there's the elevator to save money for the county that rent. There's rent, there's, uh, internet, what else is there, Trish?
Phone heat.
Phone heat, yeah, so there's all that that we'd be saving the county. And since we've got the rooms now upstairs, I think we should, that's my opinion anyway, that we need to get that moved.
Yeah, Paul's repainted them all and.
Yep.
Touched the drywall and fixed them all up since. They become vacant, so.
So, would go up there for the old, I don't know?
Nine-one-one. There's two rooms actually there, there's an office and kind of a little waiting room. So it would be.
Private.
You'd have privacy for the meeting that you're in there with the client.
No one else is needing that space?
Not as of yet.
Nope.
Is there? Really any reason that it couldn't be moved there then? They don't want to move, I know that, but. Uh, looking at the cost of going up there. That's on both rooms or one room?
Some both.
That's both rooms?
Up here?
No.
No, down there.
I assumed we're both.
And all the other bills coming in there, you're in that, you, you're talking another. Probably a hundred and fifty to two hundred.
It would, I think it would be easier.
Yeah.
With the IT.
Yep.
Because. Time, you know, Chris is right here, he can help whomever, we can help whoever's doing the billing and. Might be a little easier to coordinate with getting claims paid.
Plus, with Chris being the IT there and the security, the internet, I think it'd be a little bit more secure, I mean, we've all got to start worrying about, I hate to say it, but we've all got to start worrying about that issue.
True.
They keep bringing that up at all, every ISAC meeting there is, they they talk about. Internet security.
Well, who do you have to, uh, contact on the veteran of the fair side to? Get them to move to Wilson? Anybody else there? Board, they have a board. Could that be, we can, we can direct it to the board, could that be discussed in the near future? Yep, I think we're gonna meeting next week.
Okay.
We just made a recommendation, or? Or say we're moving it?
Yeah.
I think we just say we're moving it.
Right. I'll make that motion that we're gonna move the veterans affair up to the. Is that third, third floor, Trish?
Third floor, yeah.
Third floor.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Any other discussion?
What is, what is the end of the lease there, what date is that ended, or are we already passing at least?
Twelve thirty-one.
Perfect, first of the year.
Okay, so January one, okay.
Okay. All right, we'll have two, two offices upstairs then. An office.
It's an office and a smaller.
Yep, waiting room. They'll need help move it.
Who can we coordinate for that?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eric. Um. Group chairperson to sign engagement letter with Johnson, Mulholland, Cochran, Crocker, and Yock and Inger, England. Ed, come on, boy.
Yeah, it is.
This was on, uh.
Yes, it's on, no, for the board of adjustments, right?
Right.
Right. But they're actually representing the board of supervisors.
Right.
Randy has signed. Um. They asked for hit signature and then you can sign below. For the board of supervisors.
Randy, both can feel through. Make the motion that we approved the chairperson to sign the engagement letter. With the stated, uh, legal term.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I thought this was already done, did I go wrong?
Not the actual letter.
Not the actual letter, we hired.
Right. It was, wasn't it, I think it was advised that we should, from John, that we should get a letter of engagement, we have already approved, uh, the hiring.
That's what I thought, yeah, this baby basically is the foremost.
Correct.
Okay, discuss action on holding board of supervisor meeting to. On December twenty-seventh and January second. And then it's going to be claimed.
Right.
Um. Claims will be next week. And so we'd have to prove them in some way. That's why suggestion of having it the twenty-seventh.
Is it just, obviously, yes, it is claimed, like you said, you know a way to do that without holding a meeting, if that's all it's gonna be?
Um. I don't know if there'll be any more than that yet. Possibly.
I mean, I know that we have, we have to have a meeting on the second, that's, we always have to have the first meeting here, so that's. It's pretty good, but it have to be, so I didn't know about that. We can be told next year.
Well, my plan on being around.
I'm gonna be here.
I mean.
I'll be humbled, I should say.
I should be around, Michael. Let's take me somewhere.
If it just claims, uh. We can all slip in and sign them.
Mm-hmm.
It'll take long.
Yes.
Yep.
And if you get any stuff for the agenda, then we'll have to have a meeting.
Well, I think we have to have a meeting to approve claims.
Yeah, we still have to, yeah.
We'd have to have a forum.
Yeah.
Right.
Randy, you got a question?
Yeah, if things go correctly, I. I may have, uh. People with, I would. Bring to you the board adjustment. Oh, I'm, I'm still getting up, I'm hoping it's. Done by then, that was my plan.
Okay.
I can't tell you for sure.
Well, if you get on the agenda, then we'll plan on you being here.
Yep.
If not, then we evolve.
Twenty-seven or the second, then.
Down the.
Well, I'll make that motion to have a meeting on December twenty-seventh. And January second.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All scared. All right, we'll do a couple more.
So that one on the second, is that the one where we pedal?
Yeah.
We don't.
You're not here, you could.
I'm gonna be.
Get all the good ones.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm gonna be there too.
No, you can't run off on me. I know what you're thinking.
No, no, I'm not thinking anything. But some of those meetings, this. Like. Oh, well.
Let's do committee reports right quick, let's go back up for your court members.
Okay.
All righty, Mary, to you. So back last week. On Tuesday the twelfth, we had a public safety commission board meeting that morning. That's the only official meeting I had actually.
On Tuesday morning, I had. Did that mean by a phone? Uh, so I was on phone for that meeting, uh, Wednesday. Uh, we had dog shelter meetings slash Christmas party. It's always amazes me how well that organization functions, they do, they do a great job. And that's all I had that week.
I had none.
Andy?
Okay, on Monday, the eleventh, um. Rick and I attended the, um, compensation board meeting there at the courthouse at one-thirty.
I forgot that one, you know?
That's okay. I got your back, Rick.
Thank you, Andy.
You're welcome, and then Tuesday also, um. I had, um, a meeting at the courthouse with all of. The. Uh. What do I, how do I want to say, de- defunct North Central Iowa Workforce Development? Um, all of the CEOs, um, the other supervisors that are with that. Um, we had a ruling, um, that, um. Some of the expenditures, um. Were not approved, which, this is again, back on the state. Um, we were doing everything according to how the state wanted us to do it, and we did it. And then the feds came in and did their, um. Uh, audit. And they said how we did it was wrong. So, I know, you know, it it's again. The county got pen- penalized for what the state told us to do, but anyway, that being said, there is a way that we can offset it. Um. And, but it's not guaranteed that they will do it, we're hoping that that is the case. That, um, we'll all sign that and we'll, and we'll do it and, yeah. Go from there. But it should be hopefully taken care of, we're gonna meet again on the, um, afternoon of the twenty-seventh. So, um. And then we'll get everybody's signatures and then we'll get it sent out to the state and hopefully we'll find out right away. That's all I had.
Right. Uh, Monday after the meeting, I went up by Remrick and looked at a slop off in the washout up there. Arthur raised Marshall's contracting to. Get some loads of dirt from. The Harding. Place, so. Uh, I missed the animal meeting on Wednesday, I didn't look to that, that's all I had.
Then we loaded them the following day. They didn't go. So.
Yeah, I can say it whole.
Uh. And we had. Operator and loader for two hours, I don't, I never did here on the load. They all. Marshall was guessing to decide down.
Ooh, wow, that was a hole.
Yeah, it's, it was flopped off the biggest room. He couldn't reach it sitting on the top, he had to start building out to get out to the reach bottom. Worked out. Okay, do you have nine o'clock, you need to go into drainage, caution to go into drainage. All in favor?
Aye.
We are in drainage.
Okay. Owen won't be here today, um. So what this is on is a DD eighty branch detail improvement summary. District eighty is located in Dakota City, providing primarily urban drainage. A major improvement project was completed in oh-nine. Which included rerouting the outlet out of the District thirteen A. To the East Fork of the Des Moines River. Um, this improvement. Project included improvements to the Branch D tile, which is, um, it extends southerly to about a half block north of Mies Elementary School. And, um, at that point, the tile drops from a thirty-inch, um, in diameter down to a twelve-inch. And then continues south through the school property, the ball field and the playground. And then drops to a ten-inch tile before ending on the south side of Main Street. Um, Dakota City petition for the extended improvement, um, of Branch Tile D. Through the school grounds, the improvements to the ball field are planned in the near future, so the drainage issues, um, in the area need to be addressed first. And what they're proposing at, um, Jacobson Westegard is to improve the twelve-inch and ten-inch portions of the Branch D tile to a thirty. Inch and twenty-inch diameter pipes. Um, roughly six hundred and twenty-eight feet, greatly improving the drainage there. The new pipe will go in the same location as the old pipe, which will be removed. Also included will be a large intake, manhole, road repair and work. Um, the estimate on the project is two hundred and seventy thousand and the benefited area. Um, estimated at sixteen point seven seven acres. Which the cost is gonna average sixteen thousand one hundred dollars per acre. He's been coordinating with the city and the school on this. So what they're recommending is a reclassification to develop a schedule to pay for this project. As all of the landowners in the current Branch D schedule will not be, um, benefited by this proposed improvement, and it does show. That. The benefited lands right now proposed for DD eighty. And, um, so they're recommending a tentative approval of the engineer's report and that a date and time for the formal hearing be set. And a hearing. Has to be at least twenty days after the notices are mailed and published and forty days after, um, the board's tentative approval.
It would be forty days out. Well firstly, this is two sentences then. Um, I'd like to know some motion that the, uh. That puts a tentatively except engineers report for, uh, the DD eighty project, we can get that approved.
I'll, I'll second that motion to accept the engineer's report.
Any other discussion on this? Oh, carried there, now they've set a date and time for.
Hearing on it, have you done any research on the date or the time on that then, forty days?
Forty days out from today. Um, no. We did not.
It's February. It could probably be technically the last of the annual, but we want.
It's thirteen days left in December, correct? And then you just gotta add, what'd you say, forty, twenty-seven days to that?
My math is February.
It'd be February.
Oh, cuz we gotta get it to the paper and everything, so we lose a week there.
Has to be, yeah, it has to be published.
Yeah.
So I was just. They said, god, he said forty days.
It was forty days after the approval, I can get it to. Yeah. Because we have to, um.
I'm doubting we have anything scheduled either February fifth or twelfth.
Yeah.
So if you just get it to the paper, pick one of the days.
Forty days after it gets published.
Yeah.
Twenty, twenty days after?
Twenty days after it gets published, forty days after the approval, about forty days after today, the tentative approval. So, and we'll have time for that twenty days to get the notices and then get it published, so.
If the February fifth would give us enough time.
Yeah.
Well. Then I would set the date, it's February fifth, twenty twenty-four. And it's nine o'clock.
That'd be good, we're gonna be doing budgets at times.
Nine o'clock would be fine, nine o'clock, February twenty-four is the date and time for the formal hearing.
February fifth? Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, that's what he wanted to do, that's why.
Anybody here? On that issue?
I haven't heard from him here for the project. That's interesting, I haven't, I haven't heard what it's gonna cost this school, you know, so I'll.
I have a feeling with the schools, they've been one of the largest landowners in the.
I'm, you know, I'm not sure the timeline was. I'm not sure what budgeted for it, but I haven't heard the amount for it.
If you have something, Angela.
My question would just, if there was anything, I know you actually bet it out, there's other things that the city can do, and obviously, the cost is. That's a huge crazy cost for everybody, maybe when you, individual landlords, they just, their house.
If you.
If you look at the acres, for the school, the school has over three point two six acre, sixteen thousand acre, like that's over fifty-four thousand dollars for a school loan.
And, and honestly, it'll probably be more than that because they got a lot of roof and concrete. Or like residential, it's have grass.
Well, I'm just looking at.
Yes, I know, but what I'm just saying, they'll probably even be more than that.
Right.
And obviously, the city share is even more than that.
Yeah.
But. I mean, there's nothing against the school at all, but when you look at people that own two or three plus, like. That's a huge amount for them personally, too, I just. I know we priced it out back in twenty eighteen and the concert. And then we flew Rover, which Rover looks like it's about thirty-four to thirty-five of the estimate, but. I guess if there's any way we can cut costs and make it a lot more affordable, we, we really all need to do that. As much as we can, but then we can take apart from this or to do ourselves and.
I'm sure.
Two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Right, it's wrecking Main Street, is what's happening, the ball diamond floods and then it all goes to the intake, so it's just not big enough and then it's wrecking part of Main Street. So the city has a huge, like, quit, means you have to. Has to be, you know. Sure, like, we can't have it wrecking Main Street. But this is the base.
It does say in the engineer's report and column put together that the proposed improvements which are approved, which were approved. And then, uh, the engineering would recommend that reclassification. To develop an assessment scheduled to use a paper to project, so they are gonna look at the benefited areas and who is paying. So there would be a reclassification and certainly anything from the city side for concerns of cutting costs.
We did a ten-year back in two thousand nine for everybody. Ten-year assessment.
Yeah.
Ways that Colin can cut, if they had concrete bid, we can look at other.
Oh, yeah.
Alternative plastic, uh. But you get what you get.
So there's one of the things here on roads, like this traffic control item line seventeen, those five thousand dollars for traffic.
Right.
We've got there.
Right, and that's certainly.
There's things like that, that really add up quickly, that I just wanna make sure that.
I'll come and do it for five though.
Would you do it for four?
I might do it less than that.
That conversation because, and the one with the manhole too, like. We, we can take care of some of that.
I think if you work with the engineer first and foremost, they would be able, remember, this was set with the hearing and this would all be discussed.
I know, but I just wanted to make sure that it's.
I think.
I know it has to be done.
There could be some, I think, I, this is just a personal opinion, you wanna check with the, you know, technicalities and that's what engineers do is technicalities. I would like to think that you're thinking along the right lines that would save the project cost a bit.
Yes, I am, I was surprised to hear in the report that you've been working with the school, cuz I had never heard from the school engineer yet. But before the hearing, it'd be great if the engineer could, he could meet with you and give you a call so that I can understand what. I'm not sure I understand completely, understand the project. And then understand what that, those costs to the school need and when those costs would be, department. If Ben was trying to budget five years out, we're trying to do the same thing, so. If, if the engineer could give you a call, that would be great to set up a company.
He sure could.
Walk through the project, that way I could be prepared for the public here.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Colin's very good, he'll reach out to you.
Yeah, he'll, and he'll explain it, so you can understand.
He's very good that way. I can even understand the stuff he talks about.
It wouldn't be payable until next year, right?
And if it's over five hundred dollars, you can, you can put it over ten years.
Yeah, it was a waiver payment.
There is, where is options, but. Still, it's nice to have all those discussions before the project. Goes forward. So if there is ways to cut costs.
We also wanna do our part to the community, we're not. Those that are your boss or helping. Just making sure we have a standard.
Yeah, yeah, like they're. You know, moving your swing set and things like that.
One of the things that I'll say.
Yeah, but this is gonna cost, you know, and here they got two thousand dollars to move your swing set. Sounds pretty high, just figure those wings out.
Anything else on drainage?
At the moment.
All anticipating waiting to use drainage.
Well. I had a little thing of drainage, I got an email from that guy from, um. Uh, state hazard mitigation planner, down the dams.
Oh.
And that has to do with, um. The DD thirty-five north of, of town here.
Yeah.
Goes out by height through a fairway. And he's, he sent me all kinds of information on. That cleaning up from those five intake pipes to the river.
Yeah.
So he sent me, um. Stuff through FEMA and stuff here, I was gonna. Mention that too, um, cuz he sent it to Cole down the city also. Because. He says there is. People who can help. Plan it. Estimate the cost. Cuz there, there is funding to prevent flooding. So if they come and look at it and says, yes, it's gonna, it's causing flooding to like Fairway or Marlene's property there. Then there is funds to. Be reimbursed to clean that silt, so that. Drainage district outlet is cleaned.
Perfect, that go all the way up Sixteenth Ave. Or by the cemetery.
Yes, that, that, that's the one.
Clean all the trees and.
Well.
Is in the stream.
They would look at that, I don't know if they'll fund it, but they would look at it.
Way better than already.
Yeah, so, I think it's worth pursuing.
Can we get that to Colin or, I mean, so. Wasn't that who they recommended?
Well.
Talk with their drainage?
Actually. These people. They come and look at it. They tell you what you can and can't do. And they basically estimate it out and everything, then you have to just find a contractor, the way it sounds.
Perfect, how long does it take to get them to come and look at it then?
Um. Probably an email and a phone call.
I would suggest take a look at that.
Because it's based mainly on. Uh, they come and study to see the, what the flooding effects are. And it's a dollar for dollar match, if they estimate there's gonna be, if there's a flood, there's gonna be a. Five hundred thousand dollars with the damage to that area. You can get up to five hundred thousand dollars. Whatever, but it's a one for one match. So I think it's worth our time to look into this.
I would think that the state still has some interest in it, means that water has to get over the top of that sand. In order to keep the highway open.
Yes.
Because when the water's coming down that, from Sixteenth Avenue down. And goes under the highway, then it has to fill that. Moat to go up over the top and it's coming in a hurry, one of these days, we're gonna get that. Here drained.
Like it has in the past, it's come close to them over the highway.
It's several times, so. I think we need to do that.
So I will visit with Paul. Down, cuz he got the same. Email, I'll run down and visit with him about it. And push forward on it.
Yep.
Perfect.
Great.
Great.
Anything else in drainage?
I think, I'll, I'll get option to, uh, a lot of things.
I'll second.
Any discussion, all in favor? Oh, carried, all right, there anything else comes board the board?
Uh, yeah, another thing. And I don't think it.
Thanks, Charlie.
This has to do with health insurance. I got a, an email from our, um. Denise Feller, saying as of first of January, the mayor will no longer be covered by Walmart. Cuz there's a new generic out there, I guess, coming out. And she was gonna follow up with an email if it pertained to Mobile County. I don't know if any of our employees use it or not, but I have to bring anything back, I asked Shauna to touch base with her to make sure if we do have someone. They will be notified.
What's not gonna be covered?
You mayor? I guess you know. I don't know what it does.
Since she sent that letter, or she sent that letter that we did have something, I'm not sure.
Yeah, she says it's a drug, and I have no idea what it does.
Rheumatoid arthritis and that type of thing, I believe.
And she sent a form letter to give to our employee if we have them. Um, and that's. Uh, we have our insurance meeting the first part of February and I'm sure that'll be a hot topic that we love. Cuz that's what they push all the time, it's as soon as you can get a generic.
Right.
Drugs are so expensive. So, I asked Shawna to double check with her to make sure that.
Good.
Yeah, if there's someone that needs to be notified, no problem.
Okay, I have one other thing. Uh, this has been. Kicked around the last few weeks. Uh, we talked about the fact that Wright County recently wrote a resolution and passed it that, uh, basically infrastructure protection. Pipelines and the such, along those lines. We had a copy of it, uh, we were looking for legal review. And we're hoping that we would get that accomplished and get it passed sooner than later. Then three counties that went to court, that.
That was a different.
Different area.
Have a Shelby and story, wasn't it?
Yes, I don't, I don't believe they were using. Uh, anything similar to Wright Counties, cuz that's the one the IDDA has been working with.
They kind of signed off on.
Yes.
County pass.
And that is because it's with the drainage district infrastructure in county.
Yes.
Is what theirs is, so if there's any other type of requirements that you would like to see.
I think the one for Shelby and Story had more to do with setbacks from residential buildings.
Right.
The one of Wright Counties, what we're looking at adopting is just basically to protect. Our roads. The one of Wright Counties, what we're looking at adopting is just basically to protect our roads. And our infrastructure or tiles. And anything else that the county owns underground.
Do you want to include more than that?
Well, I think this is a start.
This, yeah.
I mean, they, we've done all the legal work on IDA, spent a bunch of money with Dog Strike going through it.
I think this gives us the, at least the groundwork for having something in place as opposed to waiting for. Them to call and say, by the way, we just, instead of going that far north, we're cutting across corner.
Right, cuz they could, they could say, ah, we don't wanna mess with that, we're gonna cut through here.
Right.
I agree with all that, better to have this in place, you can always add to it, but we have a good groundwork and it's. Appreciate the IDDA work, this actually came up a year ago.
Yes.
At the IDDA conference, so we, and other counties have done it now. Uh, I believe it's high time we get that passed.
Have you looked at it?
We're waiting to get it.
It's twenty six pages.
Did we send it upstairs?
I wanted to look okay with you guys first.
Okay.
I wanna have you guys.
Okay.
It might be changes, is that emailable to us?
Yeah, I can email it.
Might take a while to read twenty six pages.
Yeah.
Oh, well, it'll still take a little time. But that would be.
Have you read most of it, Ben?
I read it, uh, I read it about a month ago, I feel like there's a. It's a pretty hefty permit fee for every drainage that you're crossing, every road crossing is like seven hundred and fifteen bucks. Um, and deter the pipeline.
Some of our discussions at IDDA, some of the counties were charging ten thousand per crossing.
Whoa.
Yeah. So.
If you're the railroad, you live for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The argument can be made that they're, they're not a utility, so they shouldn't have. A right.
Yeah, they don't.
They'd have to get private admission. And be on private. I, I think that, that's still sitting in the utility, which what did I really believe or?
I don't think. That's, I mean, like I say, where it was ten thousand, that's, that's a little extreme.
Well, that's probably extreme.
I know, you don't worry. Judges don't like extremes.
I know.
Yeah, cuz the bad thing is if you over, overkill it, then we could be in the same situation with Story and Shelby.
Yes, you, you gotta have realistic.
Correct.
Limiting fees.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, by the same token, when they explain. The engineer has to be there, somebody has to be there all the time watching, babysitting, um. Did, did they ever come back with a plan that that's paid for by who? Us, them?
The watchers, or what they call it.
You guys know drainage district projects, when you have an instructor on site.
You, you have to pay for it.
Yeah.
They pay fifteen hundred right off the bat. And then it's seventy five hundred for every tile crossing. Seventy five hundred, oh, oh, that.
Well, I guess, since we're gonna at least look at it, I think it needs to be put into.
Does he have a copy of this?
Yeah, we need to get it endorsed.
Yeah, get it moving forward.
Yep, I agree.
Not only agenda, it's impossible.
Cuz I think it also deals with transmission lines.
Yeah.
You know, cuz we had that one that comes through, we had a lot of issues with that, where they crush tiles with the big heavy equipment.
Then we do have a ordinance on, by with that, right, with the transmission lines that. They data, deinter, seeing and whatever that is, so you know, you can work with a long reach around.
Yeah.
Don't go to plan.
I agree.
Get it in John's hands, let him look at it.
Yep.
Send it to us so we can read it.
They got McClure Engineering, that's the engineering firm.
We're gonna have to decide on somebody then.
Well, it. Resolution by Hubble County does appear, but doesn't.
Well, they changed that, but we did.
Yeah.
You have to decide on. An engineering firm.
I'm with McClure, all right.
Yeah.
Has to be your guy.
Would you want to contact them?
That's, you'd probably have to use.
To make sure that that's okay with them?
Yeah.
If you can use them as a reference.
Right, they're familiar with it, so that would make sense.
I'd rather call Rick and ask if we can use it.
Yeah. If you said, have him sign off.
Just have Rick Rasmussen sign off and say it's.
I thought you meant Rick from Westergaard.
Tell my friend over east, Rick will give us permission to use it.
Okay, anything else come for the board, all I have. In a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All favorite?
Hi. Hi.
Nine twenty two.